And welcome to this special called meeting of the Hickory City Council for a presentation of a study of equity, economy, and the demographic data for the city of Hickory. Sometime back, I believe it was in August, members of the NAACP came to our city council meeting, and among other things, they asked us to look at the unemployment rate, the poverty rate, access to housing, and healthcare, and some other issues. Subsequently, council members, and many of you that are in the audience this evening, had sessions and met with all of our council members, and subsequently, that same group, I believe, met with our city manager. So as a result of those meetings and those sessions, we are here today for a presentation by our city manager to outline some of those areas with the assistance of the Western Piedmont Council of Governance. So for tonight's meeting, I'll turn our presentation over to our city manager, Mr. Warrenwood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, members of the city council, Mr. Crone. So yeah, in October of this past year, we contracted with the Western Piedmont Council of Governance to really dig into the racial disparities that exist within our community and to report those back. And I appreciate everybody's patience. I know I'm met with NAACP, and if there's a lot of digging on these numbers, the report, you're going to get a 40-page summary tonight, so there's a lot of information to go through. The report itself is 84 pages, and it will be online tomorrow. And if anybody wants to request a copy, we'd be glad to send it to you. So Taylor Dellinger is the senior data analyst for the COG, and he was charged with putting all this information together, and it's from a lot of different sources. So he's going to start out by just talking about how he went about pulling it together, what the sources were, and then get into the presentation itself, and there is some revealing numbers in there. And in that, this is a 90-minute special workshop. If you have any burning questions while he's presenting, you can stop him at the end, but otherwise, if you could wait to the end, but if you have something, a clarification or whatever, with that, I'll turn it over to Taylor Dellinger.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'd like to echo what Warren said about everybody being patient to help get all the numbers together. It's not something you can do in five minutes, that you can tell by the data in the report, but I did want to talk a little bit about some of the sources of the data, and then we'll get right into the presentation. We'll try to, again, keep it moving, because I don't want to keep everybody here all night. But a lot of the data that you're going to see tonight came from the American Community Survey. That was one of our main sources of data. Of course, the 2020 census isn't out yet. It was completed last year, but we're waiting on the results. So a lot of the data that you're going to see on income, and poverty, and healthcare, and employment, that was our main source of data. And as we go through, we'll talk a little bit about some of the categories that the census uses to determine ethnic and racial groups, and talk a little bit about what that data means. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started here. First thing we're going to do is look at demographic data for the city. So here's our first of several charts that you're going to see. Just wanted to kind of start out with a breakdown of the different race and ethnic groups in Hickory, and how that is changing over time. So we have two graphs here. The first is from the 2010 census, which is the last complete count that we have. We also have a chart on the bottom that shows population by race from the 2014-2018 American Community Survey. The American Community Survey, just to give a little background on that, it replaced the old census long form that we had until 2000. The advantage of the American Community Survey is that it is conducted every year. But since Hickory has less than 65,000 residents, what they do is they take a five-years' worth of surveys from city residents, and they smoosh them into a combined total. So that's why it says 2014-2018. So let's talk about some of the race and ethnic categories that you're going to see tonight. You'll notice, we'll start at the bottom. If you look at the 2010 census, you'll see a category that says white alone, not Hispanic or Latino. I want to explain what that is, since that is the largest ethnic group in the city, at 68% in 2010, or 67.6% in 1418. There's actually two questions on the census that people mark. The first question they ask is race. So they can choose white, they can choose African-American, they can choose other, they can choose Asian-American. They can actually choose more than one category, and that's why you'll see, in some of the slides, you'll actually see two or more races or mixed race for that. They can also check other race. A lot of Hispanics in the community, they will check other race, because they don't see Hispanic in the first question, they'll actually check other. The second question that they ask is, are you Hispanic or not, Hispanic or Latino or not? And they check that box. So when you see white alone, not Hispanic, it means they checked white, and then they checked not Hispanic. And that's our largest group. As you can see, the 1418 estimate is 67.6%. One thing you notice that's kind of interesting is, you look at the 1418 numbers, the Hispanic or Latino, 12.8%, it is actually larger than the African-American population estimate at 11.6. So if that verifies in the 2020 census, Hispanics will actually be the largest minority group in the city. We won't know that for sure until the results come out. But irregardless, the percentage of the two groups is pretty close. Other race, you see that went from five to eight. Again, we have a lot of Hispanics that check that box. And then Asian-American, that went from three to five and a half. One last thing about the categories, these are the categories that the U.S. Census Bureau uses to designate race, ethnic groups, so that's what we're going to use in the report. All right. Throughout the report, and we just have one map to show you tonight, because there's actually a lot in the report, but for the sake of time, we did break down the city by census tract that the Census Bureau uses. However, some of these tracts, they're partially in the city, partially in the county, or in the case of 211, actually part of it's in Burke County, and 313 is in Caldwell. That study area is actually 80,000 people. The city's population is about 40. So just to give you an idea of the study area when you see the maps in the report. The reason why I wanted to show this is, you see in the table that we just showed, the overall percentages, but within those census tracts, you can actually see different percentages in a smaller area of race groups. So if we look at track 109, for instance, that runs from LR over to 70, just south of downtown, and over about to 321. So it's kind of the Ridgeview area and a little bit beyond that. You'll see that purple wedge is actually over 50%. So over half the population in that track 109 is actually African-American. And in track 110, it's about 50% white, 50% other groups. So those two areas have the largest minority percentages. Other census tracts in the study, they were 90, 95% white. So again, it shows you within the city, there's wide differences in the percentage of minority population. All right. We'll move on and talk about median age. And you can see, again, we have the different groups. Now you'll notice there's one that says white, and there's one that says white alone, not Hispanic. And again, that is because there's two different questions that they can ask on the ACS. So that's why we have that included there. But I focus more on the white alone, not Hispanic. You'll notice that median age is in the middle 40s. And it's also been going slowly up over time, as the population of the city ages. African-American median age, you'll notice that it has gone up to 42.3. So the African-American population of the city is also trending older. Contrast that with the Hispanic and Asian-American median ages, you'll notice that they are only in their 20s. So those two groups are much younger. And that age difference you're going to see throughout the presentation makes a big difference in terms of income, renter versus owner, and even healthcare. So keep that in mind. We're next going to look at income and poverty statistics. All right. So this chart, this is a PowerPoint slide, it has a, it's got a lot of numbers on it, so we'll take just a second to digest it. What we're doing here is we're doing an income distribution for different race and ethnic groups within the city of Hickory. So over on your upper left, what's upper left? I always try to remember, am I looking upper-left because it's a slide, because it's upper-left? So white, not Hispanic households. If you look at the blue wedge, you see it says 24.2%. What that means is 24.2% of households of white, not Hispanic, earn less than 25,000. Asian-American, it's a similar percentage, it's a little bit higher at 28.5. Hispanic, 39.1. African-American households, about half of African-American households in the city have household incomes of 25,000 or less. One thing that was interesting in the study, if you look at the Asian-American households that earn more than 100,000, it's 24.1. Again, that's a, it's a smaller group, because it's 5.5% of the city residents. But by percentage, it was actually slightly higher than white, non-Hispanic households. So that was one thing that was a little bit surprising in the study. How has it changed over time? And that's what you're looking at here. So we have the darker green on the slide, that's the 2014-2018 ACS. But then we're going to go backwards and look at the previous five years, or the 2009-2013 ACS. So how has it changed? First, for all households, so that's for all the city, you'll notice that it's gone up 18.4% in that time period, which is good. Again, I want to take a moment to pause here and say, this is pre-pandemic, right? So we don't, we don't have the number for exactly today, because the data runs through 2018, so I just wanted to point that out. But if you look at that time period, it's an 18.4% increase. How does it break down for the different groups? So if you look at white alone, not Hispanic, it's a 14.6% increase from 46 to 53. Asian-American, it shows a big jump, 26 to 66. So that was an increase of over 100%. What is behind that, you might be asking? This could be an issue with the survey, that the sample size is not big enough, and it could be skewing the numbers. We're just reporting what the Census Bureau is showing us. Some of the other groups, if you look at African-American, it shows that their median household income actually fell by 5.2% between the two time periods. So it fell from 26 to 25. And for Hispanics, we see a drop of 4.9% from 30 to 29. So there's definitely differences between the different race and ethnic groups in terms of median household income. All right. Let's look at poverty, because that's an important part of the study as well. Again, this is 14 to 18, so pre-pandemic, just in order to keep that in mind. Again, there's a, there's differences between the groups in terms of poverty. So the total population of Hickory in 1418, the poverty was 16.3% of residents. You may be asking, what is the poverty threshold? It varies depending on the number of people in the household, the age of the people in the household, and how many, how many kids they have are dependent. So to give you an example, family of four, two adults, two kids, poverty threshold in 2020 is about 25,000. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we're talking about. Total population 16, white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, 11.6. So it's lower than the city average. If you look at African-American, Hispanic, and Asian-American, they're going to be in the 20s for their rate. But one thing we wanted to do in the study was we do comparisons. So you can't think of Hickory in a bubble, you have to think about what do the comparison areas look like in terms of percentages for comparison purposes, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. All right. So we have four charts on this next slide. I could not figure out how to put the title on it. So I just decided to make a slide that's telling you what's coming up. But what you're going to see here, this is a comparison of the percentage of African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic, and white, not Hispanic or Latino in households with annual income below the poverty threshold. Our comparison areas that we used in the report are Catawba County, the, you're going to see Hickory MSA. Hickory MSA is the, kind of like the four, Unifor counties, so Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba. Then you're going to see the state average percentage, North Carolina, and then finally the United States. So that was our comparison areas that we used in the study. So let's take a look at it. Again, a lot of numbers on this slide. Let's go through it group by group. You look at the African-American poverty rate for the city, 28.2, that's the red column that you see on the chart. How does that compare versus other areas? It's higher than Catawba County's, the county was 22.1. Just a couple percentage points higher than the region, 25.7. North Carolina was 23.5, and the U.S. poverty rate for African-Americans was 24.2, according to the 1418 ACS results. Asian-American poverty rate, let's take a look at that. For the city, it was 23. It's higher than the county and the region, and it's about double what the North Carolina, United States rate is. I have to point out that you've got a majority of Asian-Americans in the city of Hickory are Hmong, and compared to the U.S. and North Carolina, where you're going to have more Chinese-American, Japanese-Americans, and they tend to have higher incomes. So that's part of the reason why you see the disparity there. Hispanic population, Hickory's percentage was lower than the county, and the region, and the state, and was just a couple points higher than the U.S. And then finally, white, not Hispanic, you see 11.6. It's a little bit higher than the county, a little bit less than the region, and within a percent, a percent and a half of North Carolina and the U.S. One last thing about the Asian-American, I want to point out that with the rate, you have to keep age in mind as well. So the Hmong residents here also tend to be younger than the older residents in other parts of the state and the U.S. So that's a factor as well. All right. This table shows household income distribution. And again, we're looking at the change over time. One of the things I wanted to point out in this graphic is, if you look at the less than 10 and 10,000 to 15,000 households, there's actually fewer of those households in 1418 than in 2009-2013. Also, there's a decrease in the 25 to 34, you see a drop of 48%. You do see increases in the 35 to 50, 50 to 74, and 75 to 99. So it appears that some of the lower-income households were moving into higher-income brackets over that time period. All right. So that was a lot of information there about income and poverty. The next thing we're going to look at is healthcare statistics. There's a lot more in the report on healthcare, and that's, you know, it's a very important issue right now with COVID going on. Just wanted to take one slide out of that section to show you tonight. This is, again, the change between 2009-2013 and 2014-2018 ACS. You'll notice we have fewer uninsured over that time period, which is really good news. That's what, that's what we want to see. So for the city as a whole, it dropped from 19 to 12. We see decreases in all of the different race, ethnic categories. So for instance, Hispanic, 09-13, it was almost half were uninsured. The rate is still 31.3%, which is still very, very high. Why is it so high? A couple things to keep in mind, Hispanic population, remember that median age is in the middle 20s. So we have a lot of younger Hispanics. There could also be language barrier issues to get signed up for insurance there. I could see that as a possibility, but it's still trending in the right direction. You look at African-American uninsured, 18.6 to 13.2. So again, heading in the, in the right direction, at least through 2018. All right. Next thing we're going to look at is employment statistics. All right. Now, the first thing we're going to look at here in this section is the percentage of population in the labor force. This is going to be driven by a couple factors. First of all, the age, relative age of the ethnic or race group. So if the ethnic race group tends to be older, we're going to expect the percentage in the labor force to be lower, because a lot of those residents might be 65 and over, and they're retired. So that's part, that's part of the reason why, if you see the numbers for white, not Hispanic or Latino, it's 61, and African-American at 57.2, those two age groups are older. And because they're older, you're going to have less labor force participation. Look at the Hispanic or Latino percentage in the labor force. It's over 75%. That's a very significant portion of the labor force in the city. Let me also point out with this slide, these are city residents. We are not saying these are workers that are coming into the city to work. The way the American Community Survey works, it's asking questions of residents, not necessarily jobs that are being taken from people who work, who live in the city or outside the city and come in to commute. So I just wanted to clear that up. But 75.6% of the labor force is a really high percentage. Asian-American, 71.7. Again, going back to that previous slide, the median age was much lower, so we would anticipate a higher labor force participation rate. All right. Again, I've got a lot of charts on this next one, so I had to kind of make a bonus slide here. This next slide that you're going to see is a comparison of percentage of African-American, Asian-Americans, Hispanic or Latinos, and white, non-Hispanic or Latino, age 16 over in the labor force. So let's take a look at that. All right. So again, we've got the four charts here, so we'll go through them one by one. Percentage of African-American, 16 over, so that's going to be your upper left. Hickory's the green bar, 57.2% that you saw on the previous slide. How does that compare versus other areas? So for Catawba County, the labor force participation was 63.1. The region, it was actually slightly higher. And the North Carolina in the U.S., you'll see it was in the low 60s, around 62.5, 62.7. Why is Hickory's lower? Again, because that age demographic is a little bit older. So you've got more retirees in that group. That seems to be the primary reason why there's a four or five percentage point difference there. Asian-American, 71.7 for Hickory, again, in the green. It's slightly higher than the county, percentage or two less than the region, but about the same. It is higher than the state and the U.S. Again, it's going back to that age, that median age that we showed. Tends to be a younger demographic, you're going to have more participation in the labor force. Hispanic, 75.6, that was higher than all the comparison groups. So that, that was, that's, that's good. And then white, not Hispanic, 61 for the city, it's about the same as the county. It is higher than the region. The four-county region tends to be older than Catawba County or the city, so we would expect that to be a couple percentage points less, and that's what the data showed. Hickory's percentage for labor force, white, non-Hispanic, was about the same as the state as well, 61.2, and it's just a little bit less than the U.S. average. All right. Now let's talk about unemployment rate. So in your labor force, you basically have two categories. They're either, they're in the labor force and employed, or they're in the labor force and counted as unemployed. So what do I mean by counted as unemployed? In order to be counted as unemployed, they have to be actively seeking work when they filled out the survey, or they, they believe that they were, so they checked the box and said, "I'm unemployed, but I'm actively seeking work." If they are not actively seeking work, or let's say they're a student, full-time student, or they're retired, they're not going to be in the labor force. So they don't get counted in this percentage. It's only percentage in the labor force that is seeking work. So that's what, that's what you're seeing here. And if you look at the percentages, for the city, it was 8.4% over this 1418 time period. Again, this is pre-pandemic, so keep that in mind. White, non-Hispanic or Latino was the same percent, 8.4. African-American unemployment rate was about four percentage points higher than both the city and white, non-Hispanic or Latino. And then Asian, it was 10.9. Another thing that's interesting about the study, if you look at the Hispanic unemployment rate, it's only 3.9, much, much lower. So not only is that group engaged in the labor force, but a high percentage of them are employed, or at least they were at that, during this time period. All right. So again, I know we're covering a lot of topics in a short amount of time, but we're going to spend a couple minutes next talking about housing differences. All right. So we're going to focus first on owner occupied versus renter occupied. So let's first look at owner occupied. So what we're asking here is, the percent of householders by race or ethnic group that are in an owner occupied house. So what do I mean by owner occupied? It means either they own the house outright, or they're, they have a mortgage payment. So they're in a house, they have a mortgage payment. They're not paying rent, they're paying a mortgage, or it's paid off. So if you look at the percentages of the different groups, white alone, non-Hispanic or Latino, 62% of householders in the group where the householder is that group, they own a house. If you look at Hispanic in comparison, 28.6, so it's much less. Again, part of that reason, it's going back to that age demographic, right? Median age was in their 20s. So homeownership, you don't have as many homeowners that are in their 20s, right? You're going to have more homeowners that are in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. Asian-American, 41. African-American, 42.3. Okay. So that's the, that's the green. We're going to look at renter now. And of course, it's going to be flipped, right? Because if you're, you're either an owner, or you're in a renter occupied. So renter occupied means you're paying a monthly rent. White alone, not Hispanic or Latino, 38%. If that makes sense, because 62 for the other category. Hispanic or Latino, 71.4% of the householders that are Hispanic rent. Asian-American, 58.2. African-American, 57.7. All right. Again, I had to put the title on this one, too. Comparison, now we're going to compare it. So we're going to compare the percentage of African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic, and white, non-Hispanic or Latino householders in owner occupied units. So let's take a look at that. All right. So in this case, Hickory's in the blue bar, the dark blue bar. So again, we'll start with African-Americans up on the top left. Hickory, 42.3 homeowners. Catawba County, 47.2. Hickory MSA, 49.7. Now, one thing you have to keep in mind is, the city's going to have more rental units than the county or the region does. So that's a factor as well. If you have more renter units, you're going to have a higher percentage of renters. Just, that kind of makes sense. You look at the state, 45.7, and then the U.S. is 41.8. So actually, if you look at homeowners, the city's actually pretty close to the U.S. average in that. Asian, 41.8 of Asian-Americans who are household, owner occupied householders. Again, that age group is younger, so we would expect a lower percentage, and that's why it's lower than all the other comparison groups. Hispanic, 28.6. Again, it was the lowest of the groups, but again, the age group is younger, and Hickory has more renter units than the county or the city by percentage. And then finally, white, non-Hispanic, it's 62, compared to the, the other areas that are in the low to mid 70s. So again, what's going on there? The city has more renter units as a percentage, so we would expect it to be a lower percentage. All right. Again, I couldn't put the title on it, so I had to create another slide. This is now going to look at renter occupied. So again, we're going to take the same four categories, African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic, and white, non-Hispanic, in renter occupied units and do a comparison. So if you look at the groups, again, Hickory is going to be in the dark blue bar, so it's flipped, right? So African-American, 57.7, renter, and it's going to be higher than the county, or the region, or the state, but it's going to be very similar to the U.S. So that, that was one interesting finding of the study. Asian-American householders, 58.2% rent, that was higher than all the comparison groups. Again, it's kind of a flip of the other chart. Hispanic or Latino, 71.4% are in renter occupied units, higher than the other comparison areas. And then finally, white, non-Hispanic, 38%, also higher than the other comparison areas. Again, not, not surprising, because it's a flip of what you just saw. All right, wanted to talk just a little bit about the value of owner occupied units. Again, we're just doing a comparison, just to kind of keep everything in perspective. The median owner occupied housing value in Hickory in twenty-fourteen, twenty-eighteen was a hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred. Again, let me explain this one, too. This is not necessarily what people get in their tax assessment bill, is what they think their house is worth when they fill the survey out. So they, there's a question on there, and it says, "Fill in the range," and they fill in what they think their house is worth, not necessarily what the tax assessor says. But Hickory is higher than the county and the region. You can see the region, it's only a hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred. And what's going on there is that Alexander, Burke, and Caldwell, their value of their occupied units is less than the county, so it's dragging the regional average down. Hickory's numbers, though, is very close to the state at one sixty-five nine. It is less than the U.S. at two oh four nine hundred. Of course, our standard of cost of living here is less, so we would expect the median value to be less. And that's typical of a lot of areas in the southeastern United States. All right, next section, we're going to look at educational attainment. All right, so this time, we've got three charts to look at. So this is a comparison of African American, Asian American, and Hispanics, age twenty-five and older, so we're looking at adults here, based on their educational attainment level. So on the census, the ACS, they ask a question about their educational attainment. And what you see here, there's two different bars. So the blue, did they check the box that says, "High school or higher?" And then the red, although the, the one, it's a little more orangey, bachelor degree or higher. So let's go through and look at that. We'll start with the African American educational attainment levels first, on the bottom left. So for Hickory, high school or higher African Americans, seventy-eight point seven, very comparable to the county and the region, pretty similar. It is a little bit less than the state in the U.S., which is, again, you'll see that in a lot of, a lot of the numbers of the state and the U.S. numbers are going to be higher. Bachelor degree or higher for twenty-five and older was six point three percent. Again, it's fairly close to the region and the county. It is, however, less than the state and the U.S. You'll see that the bachelor degree or higher is more like the low twenties. Asian American, high school or higher, twenty-five and older, seventy-seven point six, pretty similar, again, to the county and the region, but it is less than the state and the U.S. Bachelor degree or higher, Hickory was much higher than the county and the region at thirty-four point seven compared to twenty-three and twenty. However, it is less than the North Carolina and United States, where the percentage bachelor or higher is going to be in the low to mid-fifties. And then finally, for Hispanics, high school or higher, sixty-two point six percent, high school or higher, that's higher than the, the county and the region and the state. It was just a few percentage points less than the U.S. average. However, the bachelor, four point five, similar to the state and the region, but is about ten percent less than the state or the U.S. Why does that matter? Well, there's definitely a relationship between education and earnings, and lifetime earnings. You can clearly see that on this chart. So if you look at less than high school, median earnings is only around twenty. Every step you go up, median earnings go up. So high school goes up to twenty-three, two. Some college or associate's degree goes up to twenty-nine. Bachelor goes up to forty-five, and the graduate or professional degree goes up to fifty-five. So it clearly shows the value of education in terms of earnings, so we want to keep that in mind. This is a question, I like showing this one when we do presentations for high school students, and their eyes get, even in Zoom, when we did it in Zoom this time, their eyes really lit up when we talked about the value of education and earnings. So it's kind of a show me the money question, and their eyes really light up, so that, that one's, that's why I try to include this in a lot of presentations. All right, the next section, we're going to look at educational achievement. We're going to look at, we're actually going to look at three things. We're going to look at end-of-grade tests for three eight, and we're going to look at end-of-course for the high school nine twelve. And then we've got a slide about high school graduation rates that we added today, so let's take a look at that. All right, the first thing we're going to do is, we're going to talk about the percentage of students by race, ethnic group. We're going to look at two different districts. So we're going to look at the St. Stevens High School district, and the reason why I decided to include this in the study is that the majority of students that attend the St. Stevens district, whether elementary, middle, or high school, they're actually Hickory residents. So even though, sometimes this is confusing, but even though they're in the county system, their residence is actually in the Hickory city limits. So that's why we included it. You can see the percentage for the different schools in the St. Stevens feeder district. Look at St. Stevens Elementary, for instance, forty-one percent of those students are Hispanic. Remember back to that slide where we talked about the median age, and Hispanics' median age was much less? It's reflected in the, in the school enrollment numbers as well. If you look at Murray, about half of those students are Hispanic. African American percentages tend to be much lower for the St. Stevens schools, the St. Stevens High School district. Only one was above ten percent, and that was St. Stevens at sixteen. White students, Campbell and Snow Creek aren't in St. Stevens, it's the majority of students, but Murray and St. Stevens, it's not. Okay, so that's the St. Stevens district. Now, we'll look at the Hickory public schools and look at their percentages. So it's, it's a little bit different. You look at all the schools, only two of them in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. And we'll talk about why we used eighteen, nineteen in a second, but, because there's been a couple of school years since then, but ha, over half of the students in those schools are white. The others, it's less than fifty percent. Again, look at the Hispanic percentages. The exception of Jenkins and H-CAM, they're all above twenty. And in fact, at Longview, it's thirty-three, so it's, it's actually the, the largest group at that school. African American percentage of students, again, it's going to vary some, but for most schools, it's going to be in the lower twenties. Oakwood, Viewmont, and Northview, it's in the mid-teens. All right, so we're going to look at the end-of-grade tests. The reason why I showed you the slide and the enrollments for eighteen, nineteen, and not nineteen, twenty, or this school year, there weren't any EOGs last school year because of the pandemic. So we don't have any data on that. So I had to go back to get the last year of available data. They are, with the high schools, they've already taken the end-of-course testing for first semester. The end-of-grade tests have not happened this year. So that's why I don't have those numbers either, because we don't have results yet. So let's, I know, again, there's a lot of numbers on this chart, so let's kind of go through it one by one. So what you're seeing here, this is end-of-grade, and it's the percentage of students that performed at or above, at or above grade level, which would be a level three on the, on the test. The blue bar, the lighter blue bar, kind of the Carolina-ish blue, that's the North Carolina percentage, and you'll see that throughout the chart. Again, we're looking at three different groups, Hispanic, African American, and white. We don't have Asian on this because there was not enough students in those groups to get enough data, and that's why, that's why we only have the, the three groups that you see on the screen. So let's go through there. We'll talk about African Americans first. Forty-two point three percent of third through eighth grade students in North Carolina were at or above grade level, so they got a level three or higher. Hickory schools, three eight, it was thirty-seven point one. Longview definitely exceeded that, fifty-four point six. The lowest was Jenkins at nineteen point seven. The two middle schools, six eight. Grandview, thirty point seven. Northview, thirty-three point six. Hispanic, the state average is fifty for end-of-grade, third through eighth combined. Hickory, Hickory schools was fifty, fifty-six point nine, and the red bar, so it was above the state average. Again, Longview did really, really well, seventy-one point three. The other feeder schools were in the fifties, and the two middle schools, Northview and Grandview, were fifty-six point five and fifty point four for Northview. White students, North Carolina, seventy-two point nine. Hickory's was a little bit above that. Again, Longview had the highest at eighty-one point three. The other feeder schools tended to be in the seventies. Grandview for white was sixty-six point nine percent at or above grade level, and for Northview was seventy-eight point six. All right, next, we'll move on and look at the St. Stevens district numbers. So again, we have the state, in this case, we have the county schools, that's in the green, and then the different, either three six or aren't is seven eight. There's a little bit different as far as how they break their elementary, middle schools down. But again, we'll go through and look at the three groups. So North Carolina, African American, they're in the bottom left, forty-two point seven percent, African American at or above grade level. The county schools, it was forty-four and a half, so it's just a little bit above the state. Again, there's some variation between the schools. You see Snow Creek, forty-four point four, versus thirty-one point four at Clyde Campbell and Murray. And then for Art Middle, it was fifty-three point nine percent. Hispanic students over there in the upper right, again, for the state, it was fifty-point one. The county school is fifty-three point four, so it's a little bit above the state average. Snow Creek had the highest percentage at sixty-three. The other feeder schools generally were in the forties and low fifties, and then Art was fifty-four point nine. And then finally, for white students, North Carolina, seventy-two point nine. County system was a little bit less than that, at sixty-nine point four. You see the numbers for the feeder schools, generally either side is seventy, except for Webb-Murray at sixty-one point three, and Art was seventy-six point two, so about three-quarters past. All right, finally, for high schools, again, we'll start with African Americans first. North Carolina, this is end-of-course, so let me explain that a little bit before I get ahead of myself. It says, "End-of-course test composite score." What does that mean? So it means that the student, again, had to be at or above grade level, a level three or higher. The reason why it says composite is, is possible that they took two courses that had an end-of-course test, they have to pass both of those to count. So if they passed one, and they didn't pass the other one, then they don't count. That's why it says composite. State, thirty-four percent African American students at or above grade level. Look at the Hickory schools, it was seventeen. H-CAM, thirty-eight point nine. Hickory High, thirteen point one. Catawba County Schools, forty-three point eight. St. Stevens was thirty-four point seven, so about at the state average for St. Stevens. Hispanic, forty-two point eight percent had a level three or higher. Hickory Schools, it was thirty-three point nine. Again, H-CAM's number, it's a smaller, so there, it's a much smaller enrollment, but their level passing was higher than Hickory High School, forty-eight versus thirty-two. Catawba County Schools, forty-six point seven, so it's a few percentage points higher than the state. The St. Stevens number was forty-one point two. And then for white students, North Carolina was sixty-four point seven. Hickory was, the Hickory system, sixty-two point six, so it's just a little less. The H-CAM percentage is actually lower than the Hickory High percentage, it's sixty-three point five. And then the county school system, sixty-four point seven. St. Stevens High, sixty-seven point eight. And I just realized, I should have made St. Stevens maybe a little more red and Hickory a little more maroon. I just noticed that. I was like, well, they're both red, but they're different shades of red, so I got that, I kind of got that flipped around, but. Okay. Also wanted to show high school graduation rates. So what you're seeing on this chart, this is high school graduation rates for students that started in sixteen, seventeen, in the ninth grade. They would have graduated the end of last year, last school year, nineteen, twenty, because we're, of course, we're currently in the twenty-twenty-one school year, and the seniors haven't graduated yet. So this is the latest data that we have. The upper right, you see the North Carolina percentages. African American graduation rate there in the red is eighty-five point two. Asian American, ninety-four point four. Hispanic, eighty-one point seven. And white, non Hispanic, ninety point seven. Hickory High, African American graduation rate, seventy-seven point six. Asians, it's actually ninety-five plus. Hispanic, ninety-two point nine, so much higher than the state on that. And then white, non Hispanic is eighty-six point seven. And then for St. Stevens, African American, eighty-one point three. Asian American, ninety-four point four. Hispanic, eighty point four, so close to the state average. And white, non Hispanic, eighty-seven point eight. I know we went through a lot of school data quickly. The school data does not come from the American Community Survey, it comes from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. So that's where we got all of our, the graduation rates and the end-of-grade and end-of-course testing, it comes from DPI's website, so that's where we pulled that. All right, last section, everybody still with me? Okay? The end is, the end is in sight. Got one last section, and this is minority-owned business data. This also comes from a different data source. You see DataAxle for the source. They are the old InfoUSA or Info Group, they've changed their name several times in the last few years, but they actually have a database that looks at businesses across the United States, and one of the categories they have is the race or ethnic group of the owner. So that's what we're going to take a look at here. All right, so looking at minority-owned business statistics, for the city, DataAxle had thirty-one fifty-six businesses. Let me talk a little bit about how we got that. First of all, some locations in Hickory, there is more than one, it's one business, but they have more than one location. So we only counted it once. We didn't count it three times if they had three locations, so it's only one per business, even if they have multiple locations. We also tossed out government, we tossed out nonprofits, because they're, that's not a commercial business, they're nonprofits. So when we took that out and got rid of the duplicates, we came up with thirty-one fifty-six. This is the different percentages that you see. Total minority-owned businesses, it came up with an even three hundred, that was nine and a half percent. That is a little bit lower than the national average. There were different studies on it, most of them tended to be in the middle to upper teens as far as nationally for minority-owned businesses. And then the final graphic, we had that three hundred, but I wanted to break it down by what percent of that three hundred was owned by different ethnic minority groups. So for Hickory, about two-thirds of the minority businesses are owned by Asian Americans, and about thirty percent are owned by Hispanics, and then the other groups make up the last ten or eleven percent. Okay, I know that was a lot of data, and I think Warren, you've got a few slides to show as well.
Yeah, I was going to wrap that, but then we can open it up with questions and comments in this occasion. So that was a lot of data, and that was forty pages. The report itself is eighty-four pages. Again, we'll make it available, that and the report on the website. There, there are a handful of communities around the country that have done this broad kind of look, and even fewer that are of our size, most of them are larger jurisdictions. So, and it's, it's revealing, to say the least. There's a lot in there, there's a lot to be concerned about, there's a lot to work on. So, so just a few major takes, a lot of major takeaways, just a few. Obviously, we're becoming more racially and ethnically diverse, based on the numbers we've seen. And white population, African American populations are aging, or oldest and aging faster than the, the others. There's a large household income gap between African Americans and Hispanics on one side, and whites and Asian Americans on the other side. And there's a large educational achievement gap between African Americans and all other groups. And there's a large educational attainment gap between African Americans and Hispanics versus whites and Asians. So getting yourself out of poverty, and the surest way to do that is to prepare yourself for a good a good-paying job, if it's available. So that's, that's what we work on every day, is, is economic development and, and growing our population, growing our tax base. So the good news is, after years of stagnation, we're finally growing. So if we were facing those challenges in a community that wasn't growing, it would be even more daunting. So there is opportunity, there's a lot of room for improvement. So our economy is growing, and so is our economic opportunity. And we need to make sure that everybody in the community has the opportunity to participate in the economic successes that we have been having. And obviously, that currently is not the case. Scott Millar with the Catawba County Economic Development Group says that he needs, the county needs five hundred people a year to the workforce, new people, just to maintain. That's retirees, that's people moving, that's just to maintain what we have. So there's opportunity there. And the EDC, over the last few years, has landed two thousand new jobs. And those, all of those jobs, because we don't incentivize anything that doesn't pay at least above the average Catawba County wage, which is forty-four thousand dollars. And a lot of those jobs, you know, ITM, the average wage was sixty-five thousand. So there is, we're bringing jobs to the community that will help lift people out if they are prepared to participate in the economy. That's, that's the challenge, that's what we'll talk about. In addition to that, there are eighty-three vacant jobs, eighty-three hundred vacant jobs in the metro area. Before COVID, there were thirty-four hundred vacant jobs. So there's even more opportunity. I don't know if it's the unemployment benefits, that people are sitting on the sideline until they run out. We don't, we don't exactly know, but we know that, that the vacant jobs in the metro area has more than doubled since, since COVID.
When you say up there, "We need to add five hundred people," is that just Hickory?
That's Catawba County.
Oh, Catawba County.
We're a big part of that. We're, we're the employment hub, so that's, it's disproportionately on us. So what are some next steps related to all this? So again, we need to make sure that people, everybody in the community has access and knowledge of what needs, what they need to do to prepare themselves to participate in this economy. Our economy has changed drastic, drastically over the last twenty years. It's much more automated now. It's much more sophisticated in terms of skill sets that are required. So folks, in order not to get left behind and the numbers get even worse, we've got to make sure that there's an effort out there to, that we're engaging these populations. And what, what we would like to do is, K-64 is set up to do just that. K-64 was set up to go into schools and outside of schools and inform people about opportunities that are here in Catawba County, and what you need to do to prepare yourself to be a part of that. And how much those jobs pay, the skill sets that are required, and, and so forth. So that's, we need to engage them and really understand, what are they seeing out there? What are the obstacles that people are encountering in terms of being more successful? CDCC, the Work, and the Workforce Solutions Committee, that's, that's one of their main missions. I don't know if Johnny, Dr. Johnny Scott's here tonight. Yeah, so Dr. Scott was brought on to make sure, or to work on diversifying CDCC's student body population. So he's, and we've met with him, and, so that's his, that's his mission. And with the COG, they run career centers. There's a career center in every county in the four-county region. And they work with people on an individual basis. You can go in, you know, what are your obstacles? You don't have a, a GED, you've got transportation issues, you've got a criminal record. What are things that are keeping you from participating or being more successful in the workforce? So that is, they also manage all the, that's where I got the eighty-three hundred vacant jobs. They, they manage all that. They've got all that on a, on a website. So all that information is out there. So we need to engage these entities and find out more about, you know, what are the gaps in our community that are preventing people from, from being more successful? And what can we do as a city to help people overcome that? So that's, particularly in the disadvantaged communities that, you know, we saw a snapshot of just now. And so what we'll do, when we identify those gaps, we will come back. And, and probably what we'll do is, is have them come here, and we'll have conversations and talk about these things. And then we'll come up with a list of recommendations and strategies that we might employ to, to help work on this. And this, this isn't a one-and-done sort of thing. We're going to have to, we're going to continue. I think when the census numbers come out, we can, you know, there'll be better numbers in terms of looking at cleaner data from census to census. So the timing on that will be this coming year. So this is a baseline. This is the first time, you know, we learned some things going through this. We'll fine-tune it. We may add some categories. You know, some of these, you start going to peel the onion back and really try to figure out, you know, more about what's going on, needing more data. But this is just the first, first swipe at it. Another request, NAACP, what's the makeup of the city of Hickory in terms of our workforce? And this is a snapshot as of today. So about eleven percent white, and then you can see down the list. We're underrepresented in every minority category. Hispanic, the most. Before, a year ago, we established a, an employment diversity task force or committee internally amongst various racial groups. You know, what can we do to, you know, to broaden the, the depth of our diversity in, in our applications? So we're doing that, we're doing that now, in an effort to, to diversify the workforce and to get it. We want our workforce to look like the city. It looks like the metro area, it doesn't look like the city, obviously. And we've identified some things. As an example, the, the fire department had a hiring requirement that you had to have certain certifications in order to be considered for a firefighter position. Well, typically, those are, you know, white people in, in volunteer departments. So we, we changed the process. And now we, we got, we have the applicant pool. We don't require all those certifications. We will send you to school to, to get those. And the police department has been doing that, and that has really helped them to diversify their, well, that's just one example, some changes we've made in the organization. So with that, I know we threw a lot at you, and the report's even more in-depth, but we'd be glad to answer any questions or entertain any comments.
Of the eighty-three hundred jobs that are going unfilled, what is a breakdown of kind of jobs?
Well, about a third of those jobs are jobs that people would move here to take. And, I mean, but it is across the board. It is, it's, it's healthcare, it's manufacturing, it's, y'all, you can speak for what?
If I could speak to that a little bit. So if you look at the breakdown of the eighty-three hundred, actually, a lot of those jobs are in healthcare. And you might not think with COVID going on that that's where a lot of the openings would be, but they actually are. So healthcare is a big one. Manufacturing production is another area. There's, there's hundreds of jobs, and of course, there are varying rates of pay and experience and skill sets. So that would be a second area. But there's other areas, even with your STEM careers, engineering, mathematical, there's openings there. Even things like landscaping, groundkeeping, things like that. Also, things like HVAC, home repair, construction. So it's really a variety of different fields. So the key is, is how do you connect those jobs with the workforce that is available for those jobs? And getting those skills matched up to where they're, they're ready to start on day one, whether it's from a high school student going into labor force, or with a little extra training from CDCC, all the way up to adults maybe trying to change careers. So that's kind of what the workforce development system is all about. And of course, the workforce board is housed at the COG. So Wendy Johnson is the, she's the expert on it. Anthony also knows some information, he's our executive director, he's in the audience too. So, you know, any questions about that, we'll be glad to answer. And Wendy knows a lot about it, so she's the expert, but just to give you an idea.
I have kind of a comment and question. So who was invited to the session, pretty much? Did you invite the school systems and superintendent?
Yeah, we notified, gosh, y'all, they sent that out. We notified the school system, NAACP, Central Latino, representatives of the Hmong community.
Central Latino?
Central Latinos, what do you want me to say?
And, and I see my...
We, it was a long, we had a long list.
And I see my former school board member here.
Who's Central County, County Schools.
Yeah. What, what am I, I think, one of the glaring things that we can't, nobody can say, you know, we have to address is not to start maybe at the community college, college level, but what's happening in K through twelve. I mean, that gap is incredible. You know, when I was on school board, and we've worked on closing that achievement gap, but it just seems to be even more...
The graduation.
Yeah.
The African-American end-of-grade number at Hickory High was, I couldn't believe that.
I know. And so you can't really attempt to even do the job matching until we really raise that standard and close that gap. And so I'm, I'm surprised that they weren't here. But I think that would be the next step, too, to include the education system.
Obviously, we've got thirty minutes till our city council meeting, and I would imagine that there are a ton more questions than we have. This, this is the first that any of us or anybody in this room has heard this presentation. As you've heard, it's, it's an eighty-page document that probably the only person in here that's seen it more than, probably not anybody that's reviewed it than Taylor has. But it's going to take some, some time for us all to review that and to, and to be able to answer questions that people might have. I know I have questions. I'm sure there's folks in the audience that have questions. I don't know that we're prepared tonight for the questions because of two things. One, because of time, and the other, because we probably haven't had the opportunity, I know we haven't had the opportunity to be able to decipher this information in order to, I don't want to answer questions simply because there's a lot of information. And at this point, I'm afraid that I don't know that anybody other than Taylor, or maybe Anthony, would be able to, to answer those questions factually.
Yes or no question for Taylor?
Sure.
And I think anything for Taylor would be good to ask.
And the drop-out rates in the graduation rate?
What that, what that information looks at is, did they, the, once it started ninth grade, did they finish all four years? So let's say, if they dropped out, let's say they were a senior, and they dropped out first semester of their senior year. So because they dropped out, they did not, they did not finish. So because they did not finish, they're not going to be counted as, as a graduate. So hopefully, that answers your question.
And I'm sorry, sir. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just, I mean, obviously, that was a tremendous amount of data. And, and if anyone else has questions from council, I'd be glad to go out and do that. But I want to take this opportunity to thank Western Piedmont Council of Government, particularly Taylor and Anthony. And I want to especially thank our city manager. Our city manager initiated the conversation, after he had the conversation with the folks from the NAACP, he engaged Western Piedmont Council of Government. And, and obviously, that was the best source of information that we had. And as you can see, they put together a tremendous presentation, and there's a lot of data to be deciphered. And, and I think that's our next step before we go any further, is for us to have that opportunity, for everybody here to have that opportunity that wants to, to be able to review and, and ask those questions. We'll be happy to answer the questions. It's just that, right now, I don't think is the appropriate time to be, for us to be able to do that, because simply, we don't, we haven't had the time to review it. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but that's where we're at right now. So if, if anyone on council had anything specifically...
I just wanted to make a statement. I'm a servant on the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association, and we've been in discussion with our sister city area over in Altenberger Land in Germany. Workforce Solutions is one of our major things we discussed. Education's another one. It was upcoming, it was supposed to have been a Zoom, or not a Zoom, but a WebEx meeting in December to discuss that and maybe set up some exchanges with our sister city area with students. But COVID has put a slowdown on that for another year or so. But it's amazing, we're discussing some of the same type topics with Germany. And workforce solutions is one thing. I think they're interested in getting here to see what we're doing. We have discussed it, and I think it's Ron Elmore, that was, the issue, is I correct on that, Dave? This small business, Ron Elmore, hey, if you...
Small business technology.
Right. Okay, I knew he would know. He was in on some of those meetings with us too. So it's a big discussion going on worldwide. That's exciting, and that's inspiring, that we're all trying to get our heads together on the best, best way to, to do some of these things. Thank you.
Entertain any other comments or questions from council? I, I think we...
Oh, there was a question here.
Reverend Roberts, did you have something?
Yes, good evening. It wasn't really a question. It was just something to throw in your head to think about, and that is that the city, the black churches, NAACP, other civic groups, fraternities and stuff, need to come together with a capital campaign. And in that capital campaign, we can look at the number of kids that are being suspended, how frequently, how often, how long. Look at the number of kids that are being placed in ISS. Have a serious plan put together to work with Western Carolina, Appalachian State, Lenora Ryan, Johnson C. Smith, Winston-Salem State, and CDCC, so that we can begin to target that, that lowest demographic, graphic that was up there, to begin to put them on a plan or path so that we can change that. If we're really going to be effective about that, we need to be intentional, working together so that we can make that happen. Because the jobs that you bring in, I want to commend you guys. I've been sitting here and listening for the last couple of years. We've done a lot to bring some companies here, some businesses, some good-paying jobs. But unfortunately, none of these people got the education. And that's the biggest part. So we got to get real serious about that in terms of working on how we're going to start targeting, uh, uh, maybe too late for the current seniors. But we can target that elementary group and begin now, putting them on a track that's going to get them in the position to do what they need to do to continue to help our city. Because it's sad, it's a travesty to see the disparity between African-Americans and the other groups. So I want us to be thinking about this seriously.
Thank you, Reverend Roberts. I, I think we've got a tremendous asset, and the asset that we have is the folks that are in this room. And the folks that are not, that weren't able to be here tonight, but are plugged in and are engaged. And that's, that's the tremendous asset we have, is our community and the people that we have in our community that are engaged. So I'm, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We've got about twenty minutes until our city council meeting. We, first of all, I want to say thank you to those of you who attended tonight. President Sam of NAACP, I want to thank you specifically in NAACP for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, there's work to be done by everyone. So we'll, we'll continue moving forward, and we'll see where this takes us. At this time, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn this special meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Motion and second. All right? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being here. And this will be, this information will be available to anyone who wants it.